Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the 12th of July meeting of the Common Council to order, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Tenorio, Vitale.
Here.
Wygel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Branky.
Here.
Broat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Ten present.
Thank you. Please, we have a quorum. Please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Tenorio.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move on to item D, Public Hearings. We have one item for public hearing this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read that one out.
Ordinance to rezone the property located at 1455 South 97th Street from residential to commercial, amending section 1901.
Thank you. And I will turn things over to Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Hearing tonight is for rezoning of lands at 97th Street, just south of Greenfield Avenue. It's currently owned by Greenfield Presbyterian Church, and the lands are currently zoned residential. It's the RB zoning. The future land use is public, semi-public. It will continue its current and future land use. And one of the tenants within the property is called Maple Grove Treatment Center. And they are licensed by the State of Wisconsin as a mental health clinic, and they offer...
Steve, I think your microphone would have... Is it still on?
There we go.
Okay.
Okay. So Greenfield Presbyterian Church is the property owner. They run services at the property. And one of their tenants within the same building is the Maple Grove Treatment Center. They're licensed by the State...
Steve, you might need to hold it down while you're talking. I think it might turn off automatically after a few seconds.
Got it. Learning curve, sorry. But so they're licensed, and they offer counseling practices and so on, supportive of independent living for the community. So they also employ a small handful of... Can you hear me? Okay. I'll give this one a shot. So but the Presbyterian Church would like to sell the property to their tenant, and the tenant would then thereby take over ownership of the property and continue to, you know, do business on this site and help people within the community. The church, meanwhile, would also be a tenant within the same building and continue on, but leasing from the new property owner. So that's the gist of the summary. So given the fact that the existing use is a clinic of sorts, and they offer some instructional training and counseling for small groups of people, that's not currently allowed within the RB2 district. They've been there for a while, but given the change in ownership, we think it's in the best practice in going forward to align this property with, you know, the future use, the owner of the property being the Maple Grove Clinic. And the new zoning would go from RB2, or RB residence, to C2 commercial. And both uses would be considered allowed uses, conforming uses within the C2 zoning. They would also, the rezoning would conform with our future land use map. And just given the context, you know, the area just south of Greenfield Avenue, just east of the interstate, and sort of a nice fit within the neighborhood, we don't see this rezoning as being problematic at all, given the existing tenants of the property. One other note is that the business, Maple Grove, is a for-profit business. The property would become taxable. So Plan Commission has reviewed this land use or the zoning change in June. They had recommended approval. And public notice has been published and mailed to properties of the 200 feet. We have received some comments. The comments have all been more inquiry. We haven't received any objections to date. So we are recommending approval of the rezoning. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions from the members of the Common Council? Okay, seeing none. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none. Oh, okay. If you do, please approach the podium. And you can push the little button with the little person on it, and the light will turn green. And then please give us your name and address for our official record. And if you could, sign in. I think it's at the back.
Okay.
Thanks.
My name's Brian Bazil. My actual address that we live at is N48W22106 Wire Road, Pewaki, Wisconsin. We own the property just south of it. It's a four-family. We did talk to Paul and gave him an okay for it. But on the picture on the right, it shows that the other apartment building, is that C2 also?
The Cobalt Supreme?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is actually zoned RC. It may be hard to see here. There's a hash line running through it. So it is residentially zoned, but it's for a higher-density use.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that ours stays residential, so...
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number one? Okay, we will close public hearing number one. And we will move to item E, which is citizen participation. This is where the council can receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Also take this moment to ask everyone to please silence their phones. Happens to all of us. Each speaker must announce their name to the council and their address, sign in at the podium, and please limit your comments to statements of no more than five minutes during this 30-minute portion of our agenda. Does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. We will move to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. The room numbers of these meetings are listed on the bottom of Page 1 on your agendas. Then we will go to the mayor's report. And this is where I am going to ask Pete Daniels to come on up, as well as Council President Lysick. Pete. So I have a proclamation I am going to read as Mr. Daniels is retiring effective July 15th after 31 years of service with the City of West Alice. And as you can imagine, in 31 years, he has accomplished a lot, which leads to a very small font on this and a lot of information. So I bear with you, I ask for you to bear with me while I read this. Whereas Peter Daniels retired from his position as the city engineer with the City of West Alice effective July 15th, 2022, after 31 years of service. And whereas Peter earned his Bachelor of Science in civil and environmental engineering from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Prior to serving the City of West Alice, he worked for the City of Waukesha as a surveyor, Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan engineers as a transportation engineer, and Sewer PAC as a senior engineer. Whereas during his professional career, Peter served the citizens as an engineer, a senior engineer, a principal engineer, a principal engineer in design services, the interim acting city engineer, and ultimately, city engineer. He has contributed his professional knowledge serving as a member of the Capital Improvement Committee, which reviews the one-year, five-year, and 10-year capital improvement plans for the City of West Alice. He has attended and presented at countless public hearings, which we've all heard. He has spearheaded the development of the City Hall facade repair, capital improvement projects, multiple building generators, LED building light conversion, street lighting project, National Avenue from 76th to 82nd Street, green infrastructure, traffic signals, leveraged the maximum use of grants and other funding for all projects, served as a member of the Advisory Committee on the regional transportation planning for Sewer PAC, a member of the Technical Advisory Committee for the Zoo Interchange Project. He has also designed dozens of alleys and streets meeting the needs of the community. Whereas leading the charge, Peter fought and won the battle to prevent WISDOT from turning Highway 100 into eight lanes of traffic and demolishing $20 million of taxable properties in the process. Throughout his career, Peter has been instrumental in strategic planning processes to develop and implement plans identifying the needs of residents in the City of West Alice, has taken initiatives designed to benefit the community, fought for the best outcomes for the city's streets, led by example, and created a positive, confident working environment for the department. And whereas outside of his office, Peter is an active participant in the West Alice community. And whereas Peter has led a dedicated and successful engineering department serving as mentor to multiple engineers and technicians, was a colleague, teammate, and friend. As a servant leader, he guided his team with patience, an open-door policy, a willingness to help others, and took the time to explain options and projects, encouraged exploration of new ideas for the city, and always welcomed feedback and discussions. In every role, Peter has served with honesty, integrity, mindfulness, a deep commitment to the well-being of the needs of West Alice residents. And whereas he has dedicated his career to the betterment of West Alice through his skills and his dedication, has made it a more developed, advanced, and enriched place to live, work, and visit. Therefore, may it be known that I, Dan Devine, Mayor of the City of West Alice, State of Wisconsin, do hereby designate July 15th, 2022, as Peter Daniels' Day in the city. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens of West Alice join me in recognizing Peter's accomplishments in the field of engineering and the contributions to the City of West Alice... We're almost done. ...and join me in extending to Peter our best wishes for a very long and very happy retirement. Pete, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Wise old city engineer who hired me in 1991, Jack Schumacher, said that when it came time to repave a street a second time, it was time to probably move on because it's kind of demoralizing to have to do the same street twice. So that's kind of what's about to happen in the city. So I figured it was time to move on. But I do thank all the mentors, including Jack, who hired me. I don't, he saw something in me that I think my coworkers questioned for a while, but apparently I amounted to something. So I thank all the mentors, both here, staff, coworkers, who've trained me and mentored me because I didn't know much when I came here, but apparently I learned a few things. So thank you very much.
That side always gets the perk of getting to high-five everybody on their way out.
Mr. Mayor, they used to call Joe Schumacher Concrete Joe.
Concrete Jack.
Jack.
Yeah, it was the license plate for a while. They custom-placed. Just one other thing under the mayor's report. We had a ribbon-cutting this afternoon for a business that opened up by two West Alice residents. I was joined by a lot of state representatives. Alderwoman Keen and Alderman Tenorio were there, as well as a lot of people from the community. But it's called Green Homeowners United, and they do a lot of work regarding helping homeowners make their homes more energy-efficient, saving money, more environmentally friendly. And they opened up an office on 96th and Greenfield this afternoon. So they have a very strong presence on the internet if you're interested in checking them out. But it's a great opportunity. They used the state's Main Street bounce-back program to fill a vacant storefront or a vacant building, which is a great story. And it's just extra special because both owners are residents of West Alice. So I want to congratulate them. That does conclude the mayor's report, and we move on to item H. Are there any reports from the alderpersons this evening?
Mayor Bazil.
Alderman Broat.
I would like to say that this Saturday, July 16th, at 9:00 a.m., we're having our first volunteer meeting for anybody interested in doing volunteer work at the Honey Creek Cemetery. We're in the process of repurposing and freshening it up. I wasn't going to say renew life, but let that be right. Next block this Saturday, July 16th. Thank you.
You're on a tear tonight. You're about ready for your own public access show. Does anyone want to follow that and try to do another alderperson's report? All right. Then we will move on to item I. Alderman Lysick.
I move to the approval of the Common Council Minutes of June 28, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any changes or adjustments? All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. We have no standing committee reports under item J. So I will move to the item K.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor, can we pull one of the items from the consent agenda?
Yes.
You got that one already?
No.
Oh, it's for the Class B tavern license for binary?
Okay.
Put that back to committee.
Do you want to make a motion to refer it to committee?
Yeah, can I make a motion to refer it to committee?
Yeah. Is any objection? I'll just... It's under 12.
It's under number 12.
Third, second listing.
Yep, it's the second one down.
I can just so move that, correct?
Without objection.
Without objection. So moved. Done.
Thank you.
Thanks. Back to you, Alderman Lysick.
I would like, I would then move that the Hail of the Sunny Common House Center together to full, head-sufficiently acceptable...
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Wygel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Branky.
Aye.
Broat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenant favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Alderman Lysick.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in recess. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in recess.[466.94][466.94](APPLAUSE).
Resolution 2022-0491, resolution to approve a three-year agreement to renew annually after the, renew annually after the initial term for the single-stream recycling processing services between John's Disposal Service Incorporated and the city of West Dallas. Okay.
So, we've had contractual services with John's Disposal for recycling processing since 2017. At the end of July here, our contract expires, so we did a request for a proposal, and we did have two companies that expressed interest in providing those services with the city, and we have chosen John's Disposal as well to continue those services. We negotiated a three-year contract with annual renewals thereafter, subject upon approval of both parties, so.
Dave, I feel like it's deja vu here. Did we do this in 2019 as well?
Yes, in 2019, we were approached by John's Disposal. If we're able to review and renegotiate our existing contract.
That's what it was.
Based on that contract terms, we decided not to because it was very favorable for the city.
Right, okay, that's what it was. Thank you.
Was that your contract?
Yeah.
And we're going up from $45 a ton to $92 a ton, correct?
Correct.
And I think we should add though to that, we have unusually clean recycling, that's why we get this rate, correct? Because other cities have co-mingled diapers, garbage, everything in their recycling, which makes them pay more for.
Correct, we've been, John's Disposal has indicated, and the patrons of the city has followed the rules and regulations and has made it easier for John's Disposal. There is a residual fee, as it's identified, where if you have certain garbage and materials that's not recyclable, you know, you are charged per ton for that. So it is an increase in services, as Alderperson wrote, mentioned, so it's an increase of about $200,000 per year.
While we're talking about the whole recycling thing, is there something we can do to keep enforcing a little bit tougher residents who do not follow the recycling rules and are throwing trash and maggot, you know, ends up being maggots and stuff in the recycling?
So currently, right now, the refuse, five refuse crews as well as two recycling crews, they put a notification to the patient or whoever lives in that dwelling, and that's a notification for them to correct that measure or remedy it.
Okay.
Within the next week, it's followed up with the crew as well as the supervisor.
So if they don't follow it, then what happens to them?
Then it's a written violation.
Okay.
And normally, we give them one extra attempt to correct, then there's a citation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If we have noticeable, what he had just mentioned, stuff that doesn't belong, do we just leave the cart there?
Usually, it depends on the amount that's within that container. So if it's a small amount, we do take it. If it's, you know, somewhat of a substantial amount, yes, we do leave it and say we are not going to service that container.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman, Alderwoman Ranky.
Part of the resolution, it indicates to renew annually after the initial term. Does that mean basically it's done automatically, or that they be the sole service, or will we still let, leave it out for bits?
So the initial term of the contract is three years. Then thereafter, we can renew annually, subject upon, you know, both parties agreeing. If one individual or other party does not give the 90-day notice that's written, identified within the contract, it's renewed automatically.
Okay.
A 90-day notice is required for any party to cancel the service.
So then it's automatic, and basically we are bidding out.
Correct, yep.
I see.
Automatically renews, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Grisham.
Motion to approve.
Senator. Oh, I'm sorry, he had.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, and I didn't know, I thought you wanted to ask a question.
One other question, with that giant pay increase, do we get any kind of thing in our contract where it says if the cost of recycling goes down, then we get a break on that?
There is not a floor for pricing, so everything is based on the value of the material, the commodity, which in this case is the recycling materials that we have within the city.
Okay.
If the markets deplete, and in 2019, prior to 2020, the value of that material is not increased, not substantial, then obviously the city would have to pay more in the processing to offset that charge. So if we don't get much value or monetary value, yeah, the city loses out and therefore has to pay more money to get rid of that material.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Our second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 19, Resolution 2022-0489, resolution authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal Forgiving Financial Assistance Agreement in an amount up to $346,300 to undertake a project to replace private-led service lines.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And Item 20 is Resolution 2022-0421, resolution to approve a petition for the change of an alley located on the north side of the 7400 block of West Greenfield Avenue. Is there anybody here? Attorney Dixon.
Chair, if you look on the screen, what you're going to see is the two-dimensional site plan draft that was provided to me by the architect for Double Bs. This is a layout that has been presented. As you can see, on the, it's, the upper side of it is the west, north is facing to the right here, so you're going to orient it that way. So on the upper left-hand side, the southwest corner of this area, that's where the smokers would be located for Double Bs to use their, that land for their operations. And then you'll see some gates and fences kind of built in throughout this area, and then also on the bottom right-hand corner of the screen, it'd be the northeast corner of this parcel, that is where a parking area would be located for the Double Bs' van, the truck that they use for their food truck. That's really the extent of the permanent structures going in there. Dumpsters will be located on the northwest corner, which is the upper right-hand corner of your screen, and that's really the extent of the permanent improvements back there.
Are they turning the smokers?
The smokers would be accessed from the east, so they'd be facing down on the page, yes, so those are the doors that you see right.
Right now, they're up against their, they're parallel, the back is parallel to the back of their building.
That is one issue that is being corrected by redesigning, that there is a sewer line running right around here, so they have to get these off the sewer line, and then by also, health code has to be a certain amount of distance away from the building, and then they also have to get the dumpsters far away. So that's why this design solves a lot of those issues, by having the smokers separate from the building, from other structures, away from the power lines that are running overhead, and also allowing enough separation to the dumpsters, plus creating a channel or area to walk through to access everything for staff that use these things. This has not been cleared through Public Works nor Health Department, so there might be minor modifications to this, but this was the general concept that was presented, and it would make it functional for Double Bs to use that land. So any questions on this, although I can get into the agreement and some details from that.
Kale, I have a question. Mr. Chairman.
Alderman.
Yeah, so are we vacating the alley that people won't be able to get through the alley then? What's going on?
So what would happen is that, it's not technically a vacation, but it is a change in alley. So as you can see from this, this is a very rough image, we'll get an actual certified survey map to do this technically, but generally what's going to happen is the alley that goes like this, along the buildings, as you can kind of see with that shaded line behind, would actually become this red area. So the alley as it's currently used by the public is effectively right here. You can see where the shaded area is. That's not technically legally where the alley goes, but if the council approves this, it would become where the alley actually is located.
So it's really no change to the public, but we're giving up what is the alley, but isn't the alley?
I would be shocked if anyone who uses alley knew that they were not driving on the alley. I don't think a single person in this area ever has actually followed the alley.
I'm looking at it right now on Google Earth.
They're driving, they're driving over actually private city land and then crossing over. So it's, as I explained in the prior meeting, it was a very impractical layout for an alley. This solves a number of issues. It benefits Noble Senior Living right here by adding some space and some privately-owned land for them. It benefits Double Bs by adding some space to allow them to continue operations, and it benefits McCocos by giving them some additional space as well. Plus, it configures the alley the way the public has been using it for probably 65 years. No questions on the map, then? Just moving to the agreement. You saw the blanks from last time that we talked to, or we talked about last time. I can tell you that for letter A, this is the McCocos property, the owner of that building. They're not going to actually pay anything as a result of this, so they've signed the agreement. Timber is Double Bs. They have agreed to make a payment of $75,000 in order to facilitate this. They'll also post a bond equal to the amount of the contracts for their work back there, and that'll be dependent upon the contractor submitting that performance bond to be completed by December 31st, 2022. And then CTR is Noble Senior Living's owner, the owner of that land, that is also a zero. All the other terms remain the same, and so tonight I would just ask the committee to consider approving this petition. I only have a signed document from Scott Bunker's entity. I believe I will get a signed one from Timber because they've agreed to it verbally, and then I will work on getting a signed agreement from Noble. I haven't heard any objections that seem to be something that would affect the impact of the deal, but the only issue that's been brought up is potentially shortening this area of the land slightly, or trying to reconfigure this a little bit to allow a truck to pull in easily into this location. That's something I can work on with the applicants involved and the two parties involved, and I could work that out. So all I'd ask is basically for this committee to approve this petition, subject to agreement by the other parties.
Alderman.
We are putting lines, if they're not, if they don't have any fence or anything, we are putting lines up where they cannot go over. So the truck cannot be extending into the alley, correct?
Correct, and it's a very good point, in that that was one of the issues in the past, is that when a food truck was parked back here, it was extending into the area that others were using.
Correct.
If this becomes private property, they have enough space in that design to park their truck right here, and that's the only reason I'm still wondering whether we can shave off space here or not, but we'll try to work that out so that their truck can be parked on the private property, and at that point in time, there's really no excuse for it to be sticking into the.
Right, because if they do, I'm sorry, I want them cited. If they're sticking out into the public area, they need to be cited.
Especially because this is a heavily-used alley. They probably wouldn't be cited, but they'd be towed.
There you go.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Vitale.
Kale, the other two businesses or establishment, they're kind of willing to come forward with money, we're not sure yet, right?
No, we didn't charge them, they're not being charged.
I mean, they won't be charged anyway, I mean, in any.
Which entity?
Yes.
So the only entity that's paying for this to occur is Double Bs.
Yes.
They're making a payment of $75,000 to allow for, the city is essentially losing a fair amount of its land in this process, instead dedicating it right away, and that's how we're able to create more private property. So that's a significant factor, plus the idea, you know, we'll have to get a survey, and just in general, this is how contracts are. There's enough interest in Double Bs to make this happen, that that's the payment they're willing to make.
Okay, thank you, Kale.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Ranky.
Do any of these businesses have outside patios that would hinder this?
Not that would hinder it. McCocos has an outdoor area behind their building, Double Bs does not, and I don't believe any of the operations for Noble are outside the building.
Anyone else? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor with adjournments?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Public Works. Okay, we move on with the license, oh, no, I don't need that. We move on with the License and Health Committee, all the members present. So we have some items, the first item is.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before you read out Item 22, that person withdrew their application?
Or withdrew, because I, yeah, I thought I didn't see it, which is good, I'm glad they did. So we just, all we do then now, just take some file?
Move on to 23.
Okay, cool, thank you. Then we got Item 23, 2022-0729, new Class B tavern license application for two-plus, two success, DBA 123 Buck Bar, 5822 West Lincoln Avenue, Agent Anthony Bergerino, LLC, 22186. Mr. Bergerino?
Yes.
You want to sit over here?
Yes, sir.
So I do understand that you are a potential buyer of that.
Correct.
Place, right? So what's your intentions of doing in there? The same thing has been for years?
Correct.
Like corner bar?
Yes.
No music?
No music, oh, well, jukebox maybe, like a typical bar.
Yeah. I know you do have some driving records, which I don't think we probably can use that against you, you know?
Okay.
But one was very vividly, just occurred, right?
Correct.
2020, yes. So any questions from the committee members?
Nope.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And maybe this would be a Dan Adamek thing too. Hate to put you on the spot, Dan, but if this goes through, that whole front of the building is falling off.
Correct.
What do you plan on doing?
Well, they mentioned there was a.
Who's Dave?
Patrick.
Okay.
Mentioned that there is a grant for a facade grant, which I didn't explore because first I wanted to see what the license was, but my plan for the front of the building is open it up and make windows, put windows there, whatever it takes to get to that point. If that's, if that's okay with the city.
Yeah, actually, myself, you know, have been a drama in respect of the neighbors, you know, complaining about, see that tarp over the wall, you know?
I can't believe a tarp is sitting on that building. How long has that been like that?
Well, over a year, I mean, a couple of years, right then, how long has it been? Two years?
Early 2020, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's over, over two years.
Okay, the property's what?
In court.
For what? For what?
For the, the disrepair of the building.
The disrepair, yes.
Yeah.
It, it, it was in, it's in great disrepair.
I don't know about the roof, the roof probably needs, well.
Yes.
Building inspection will.
Well, they have to go through with their inspection.
So, any more questions for the committee members? I think we need the building to be, uh, go back or it should be.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just wanna let the committee know too that the attorney's office did issue a notice of interim public nuisance against this property about a week ago. So, there is some pressure from code enforcement as well as our office to get this thing repaired as fast as possible. And I understand is that's what the applicant would do.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It was a tie.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Tie goes to the runner.
Go ahead.
How much of an investment are you going to make into this property, if you don't mind me asking?
It looks right now, the purchase price was approved at one-seventy-five and we're looking at one-hundred thousand.
Alright, thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Alderman, throw.
If we do issue a license, do we wanna issue it to a building that's been declared a nuisance? Is that, I, I don't know if that's rhetorical, legal question or what?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Alderman, I mean, uh, Cale.
Committee has multiple options, if you'd like, you could use this standard procedure of where you approve a license and let it sit in the council, uh, status until the repairs are already completed and then it's issued by the clerk at that point. Or you could issue it right now and just trust the applicant to complete the work, it's your decision.
You know, uh, uh, have been a nuisance, uh, for the neighborhood for a long time. And I'm fully aware of that, you know, I mean, I've been getting a lot of calls really. And, uh, to me, uh, if it's a potential, uh, interest person to, uh, try to open up that corner, you know, uh, cause I'm not too happy about it, you know, really, the way it's been sitting. I, I, I know the, uh, the owner, you know, I mean, uh, it's been, uh, I mean, I use a term which is a truth, lied to the building inspection just as well, he was gonna do this, he was gonna do that, but nothing ever happened. This has got no money, well, it's not the reason, cause I know the man pretty well, you know, so. So I, I believe, I think, uh, for me, I think we should move ahead with the gentleman tried to get the corner going, you know? Tom.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, wait, yeah, Tom.
I guess I'm gonna disagree with you, Vince. This property is rundown, it's in bad shape, it needs a lot of work on it. We have limited licenses to give out. We're trying to save them for the new developments on the east end of town. And I don't think taking a flyer on somebody fixing up that dilapidated building and making it a corner tavern is in the best interests of the city. I think that if he comes, if he fixes up the building, he comes in for a license after it's fixed up, that's fine. But I don't think you should be just giving him a license on, on the come that he's gonna go fix, spend a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars fixing up that building. Cause I don't think it's gonna happen. I don't see that little corner tavern there generating enough revenue to do that. So I, I would suggest that you deny the license at this time until that building is brought back into shape.
But, uh, the, uh, the fact stands that we can apply, uh, I believe on the structurally, uh, place of building, you know, uh, that if he does complete that within, say, three months, four months, we can always pull that license away, really, I mean, if it's not get done, right?
Well, so, a- at this point, I don't believe that building is occupiable, I don't know if you'd issued occupancy permit for that building. So, they won't be able to use the license until that permit's issued anyway.
That's correct.
So, even if you issue it tonight, he would not be able to open until the occupancy permit's issued. So, you could issue it tonight and hold it at council, or you could, uh, deny it, or you could approve it without condition. It's really up to the committee how you wanna proceed.
I, I, I believe we should have conditions, uh, go along with that, you know, I, to me, that's a proper way to go, I mean, really.
If that's the case, then I would, I would suggest approving at the committee level and holding at the council level until all occupancy permits are issued.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna ask, um, and I don't wanna put our, our clerk on the spot, but do we know how many, similar to what Alderman Lysick had said, do we know how many licenses we have left currently?
I believe it's five or six.
No, four.
Four, five, or six?
There would be four if this was approved and then the, we have four that are being kind of held, so there would be four left.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Venus is a new applicant, does he have to submit a diagram for us?
Yeah, he can, yeah, well, he's got a.
I believe I did. It was attached.
Yeah.
The diagram?
Didn't see it.
So that's, you know, that app, application, because I haven't seen it.
It's not part of the posted, I could log in and get it, but he can probably describe, he can probably describe what he is gonna have.
You know, what he plans on doing with the facility. What do you plan on doing with this facility?
Run it as a bar, I was gonna, like a corner tavern. You know, it, I'm gonna remodel it, I, what I, there's, uh, living quarters there and I was planning on living in the back half of it. So, pa, part of it's gonna stay living quarters and then as business, you know, I was gonna, whatever the city wanted done, I would do. You know, I was looking for direction on what they wanted for the facade, what they, you know, or if they want nothing, I, I, I really respect that, I would walk away. But I put the offer to purchase contingent upon getting a liquor license. You know, so, and if it's no, it's no, then I just walk away. You know, but if you give me a, a concrete plan of what you want done, I would be eight. You know, right now, they, you know, would I put food in there? Eventually I would, but the, the bathrooms are not conforming. You know, are they ADA? I don't know that, cause you can't see, as the attorney said, it's not, um, occupiable. I mean, there is stuff from floor to ceiling in there. It was used as an antique store, I believe. So if you go to every floor of that building, there is stuff everywhere, so it needs to be vacated. There's a three-car garage attached, or behind it, a, a detached garage, and that is full of stuff as well. So it all needs to be, it needs to be really done over. So, and I'm willing to do it, but I wanna know what it, what it is the city is looking for. And if there, if it is, if it's not possible, I totally agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Alderman person.
In light of, uh, the feedback that we've heard from our departments, it sounds like there's a lot, uh, that you would need to do prior to, mm, I guess my approval, uh, individual approval to say I'd offer you that license, even with conditions.
Okay.
I think if you're really wanting to invest into this building, that I would like to see that done prior to the issuance of a license. And I know that may be difficult for you, uh, to, to, to do. But I think that is fair in saying you're gonna make the commitment to what needs to be done. There's just too many things with that building and in light of the fact that we only have four licenses to, to offer out, that's a big risk on, on our part.
Correct.
So, um, with that being said, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the aye have it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, let's move on to item twenty-four. Twenty-twenty-two slash zero seven-two-two, new Class B tavern license and special event permit application for Maria Rupina Fine Food Craft Fair, seven-six-zero-nine, West Billway Road in the parking lot, Westales, Wisconsin, five-three-two-one-nine, on Saturday, July sixteen, twenty-twenty-two, from ten AM to eight PM. LLC, one-nine-one, and SPEV twenty-two fifty-two. Maria, you here, right?
I'm right here.
Oh.
Hello.
I'm just kidding you, I'm, I'm just kidding you, Maria, I'm just kidding you.
Hello.
Good, how are you?
You must have blinked, Vince.
I know. So I know what you guys doing, you know, I mean, I don't see any really recent, so any comment?
Just like last year, just like last year, right?
Yeah, the same thing, you know? Yes.
I would ask that if you approve this license, it's subjected to being surrendered the day after this event.
Any further questions from the committee members?
No. Motion to approve with condition of surrendering the day after the event.
Second.
That's right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the aye have it. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alright, we move on to item twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two zero eight zero four, new Class B tavern license application for Vidio Enterprise LLC DBA, eighty-fourth Classic Cafe, one-six-five-zero, South Eighty-Fourth Street. Agent Jennifer Vidio, LLC, twenty-two-one-nine-three. Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, you?
So, uh, so what you thinking about doing over there, you have any, uh?
It's not a restaurant, it's a restaurant, I just wanna.
Restaurant, right?
Yeah, it's a restaurant, I just wanted to open the bar.
Sure.
But just to serve like drinks for when they're eating.
Are you talking about in the back?
Huh? Yeah, the back.
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
You don't have any, uh, previous offenses or anything like that, right? An, an, any offenses, driver, not driver license, but anything else?
No.
Drunk and driving, anything like that?
No.
Any question for the committee members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In past, uh, when that was Johnny V's, that was used for special events and whatnot, are you planning on opening it, just keeping it open as a bar during your operating hours, or how are you?
So the operating hours would be from seven AM to, to thirty. So from seven AM to ten o'clock, it would still be like the restaurant, like the diner would still be open and then I would have the bar open.
From what time?
From until like ten to, to thirty. I mean, it would still be open all day until like seven to two-thirty, but like the food would stop being, um, served until ten o'clock.
Alright, I have no other questions.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, the two-thirty, they all in weekends then, and the two o'clock during the week?
Two o'clock during the weekend, two-thirty during the weekends, Friday and Saturday.
Did I hear a second?
There was no second, I'll second.
So is there a motion for a second?
I gave a second.
Oh, you put the motion in?
I put the motion in.
You put the motion in, so she's second, all.
Is there a Class B tavern license available?
Yes.
There is?
Yeah. This would be replacing one that expired.
Thank you.
Any further questions, so we have an emotion and a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the aye have it.
Thank you.
Good luck, you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Then we move, we move on to item twenty-six, two-zero-two-two dash zero seven-eight-one. Twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-four, new operator's license, bartender D operator, application for Tina Markowski. Bartender two-six-one, we apply due non-appearance at six-twenty and six-twenty-eight twenty-two, license and out.
Mr. Chair, I believe she had car trouble on the way to the last meeting.
Yes, I was stranded in Oak Creek.
Oh.
I did call immediately.
Yeah, but we weren't in the office.
Well, how come?
So I thought maybe she, she just changed her mind, you know?
No.
So any other questions, uh, from the committee members?
Uh, Mr. Chair, you have a one OWI in twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am, that was my first one.
Rehab allocation, counseling, blower, huge mistake. Been bartending for thirty-three years, licensed in Milwaukee, owned a bar in Cudahay, used poor judgment and paid dearly. Alright, thank you. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, the aye have it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It was an honest statement.
Thank you.
Alright, then we move on to, uh, item twenty-seven. Twenty-twenty-two dash zero seven eight-three, twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-four renewal operator license, bartender class D operator for application for Heather Bosanek, bartender two-sixty. Are you here? She's not here, eh? She's not here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Rebecca, is this her first non-appearance? Okay, um.
Yeah, we can all.
Motion to hold them.
Hold it for another.
Second.
Yeah.
For an August, next time.
Motion and a second.
All in favor of the motion to hold it?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the aye have it. Then we have the last one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we got one more thing.
Oh, no, we do. So all in the motion for aye?
Yep, well, said aye.
Okay, opposed, the aye have it. Okay, then we move on to, uh, item.
Right here.
Yeah.
What's on item twelve?
Item twelve, Class B Tavern License, LLC, twenty-two-one-eighty-nine, Jana Bowman. Agent for B-two, binary, a DBA, binary.
Binary.
Karma's Food and Spirit, nine-one-zero-five, West Lincoln. Okay, so you have concern about that?
Well, no, um, so according to what Nick sent us, let me get back to that, he said, the committee may want to pull this from consent agenda to put condition on license about when it will be surrendered, cause there'll be an overlap, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I could suggest a motion, the motion to approve, subject to surrender upon demand of the new licensee.
What he said.
Oh. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
We have to have a second.
We need an emotion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I will second it formally, because I did not second it.
That's good, I'm gonna do that.
Aye.
Opposed, the aye have it.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
The aye has it, thank you.
Advisory come to order, number twenty-nine, resolution urging the state of Wisconsin lawmakers to create sustainable funding structure for municipalities. All banks, but the minutes reflect all members of present.
And that the Tina Gallery is making motions.
You got a person a second.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Can I do that in your committee meeting?
I have to do a point of order with the audience here, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
So you wanna put some of your money on that too, uh?
Well, basically, I was very pleased that, um, I was asked to sponsor this because
Yes.
the communities need help. Obviously, uh, the state isn't recognizing this fact and, um, it's unfortunate, it really is unfortunate, I wish the, the league would help us out on this more than what they have. The method that is in this resolution is, uh, offers, um, options for a sustainable structure. Uh, very good suggestions and I would hope that the, the state leaders would act, act appropriately on it. That because there's so many of the communities that are struggling. I don't think, I think it's been seventeen years since they, they basically have changed anything. I don't think they've changed the procedure of, of this.
They actually, they made it worse in twenty-twelve, yeah.
That's what I understand.
Yeah, when the, when the floor of the levy limits was taken out, there was a two percent floor. Now there's none, so if you don't have a lot of net new construction, you don't have excess capacity. I think one year we had, we could go up four-hundred-and-forty-seven or sixty-seven thousand dollars, which is one of our contracts with the police or fire.
So, we do need help, we do need help.
Absolutely.
Especially since.
Cale, would you like to add anything to this?
I'm happy to inject my opinion if the committee would like me to, that over the last twenty years, inflation has been relatively low. So that two percent floor just coincidentally happened to line up approximately with what inflation was at that time. Now that inflation is going up, uh, that, and that random floor was gone, zero percent or less than one percent annual increase is not. Now that inflation is going up, uh, that, and that random floor was gone, 0% or less than 1% annual increase is not sufficient, we have 7% annual inflation.
Exactly.
We pay the same cost as everyone else, it's just not a sustainable model.
It'd be beneficial, whereas since the state doesn't reimburse us properly for state fair anyways.
Well, there's, there's-
I'm gonna keep digging it.
There's all kinds of, there's all kinds of funding sources that are drying up, and the fact that our levy limit, despite all the other issues, is not able to meet, uh, inflationary rates annually. It's an unsustainable financing model, and it's dooming the city to financial issues every year.
Right. And the levy limit option is just one of the options, there's other options that have to do with alternative revenues that wouldn't, um, affect the taxpayers directly as much, but.
So, so Ms., Mrs. Chair, I would like to ask you-
Elder Manvai Kelly.
I would like to ask you, is that something could be maybe accommodated through block grant programs, some of those funding that you, you can do that, I mean, right? I mean, it's not the way it works.
Well, I think so.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Each, each year, we have a deficit when we start the budget process of millions of dollars. So between what the departments are asking for to do their regular operations, and what we can actually ex- expend the next year, is a huge gap. I think two years ago, it was $3.5 million that we had to reduce from our budget, which is significant in a city of this size. So we have used block grant funds for some of, to plug some holes, I guess, but it's not, it's not eligible for doing that for all of these-
Yes.
All of what we need funding availability for. So we just, we just really need some other options. We can't continue to reduce services and staff because our budget is 87% police and staff. Well, not quite 87% yet for police and fire, they're, they're 57. But if, if things continue, I would guess in less than 10 years, it could be 87% police and fire.
So, so, so the fact is that every, every community in the state really is facing, uh-
No, that, the-
I, I mean, I mean, is it bigger communities are facing that, or?
It's the communities that are fully built. So you have a lot of communities in the suburbs that are building, they have lots of new construction, so they get, they have larger levy-
Referential treatment.
Capacity.
Okay.
Yeah, I, if you wanna call it that. Um, I, I was just trying not to make it political.
I'm here to make it political?
I'll go ahead with the two.
Mayor, would you like to hero win on this as well?
Were you gonna, I'm sorry, I just-
The only suggestion I was gonna make is that the, the current tax levy is a, Wisconsin is known for imposing one of the higher burdens in the country on property tax, property owners. City of West Coast gets a lot of visitors, if the state would allow for a local sales tax, that would take the burden off property owners and more fairly distribute it to the people who are using the city. So I think the sales tax would be an excellent option, that would fairly spread the burden out, and I think that would be a way to reduce the cost to local taxpayers.
So eventually, the council will have to make a decision.
Well, the state has to make the decision for us, we cannot impose a local sales tax without state action.
Okay, Mayor?
Madam Chair, thank you, I just wanted to share a couple of, um, facts that I got recently from the league. There was a Legislative Reference Bureau memo showing that since 2011, shared revenue has decreased by 9%, and this is statewide, but local spending on police, fire, and EMS has increased by 16.7%. Another fact I want to share is that state income tax collections have more than tripled since the early 1990s, which are the appropriations for the shared revenue program, which is the primary mechanism for upholding the state's original commitment, how many decades ago that was, to redistribute some portion of the state income and sales tax collections back to local governments. That's declined somewhat, but if you take inflation into account, the disparity from the 1990s shared revenue expenditure of 835 million, if it had grown at the pace of inflation, it would have totaled 1.73 billion in 2021, more than double the, the estimated expenditure. So it's not like the money's not there, it's just not coming back to the communities. And this, we all know the state's currently sitting on massive surpluses, and that is not coming back to the communities. So that's all I have.
You think, basically, the league will eventually work on some of it?
The league has been working on it for years and years, and that has been, I have probably sat in more league meetings talking about this than common council meetings, talking about everything else. And the fact is, I think I've said this before, everybody in the Assembly and the Senate is essentially in a very safe seat, whether they're a D or an R next to their name, they don't have to listen to anybody. And, you know, it, it's partisan, it's dysfunctional. I don't know, you know, I keep scratching my head, and we keep talking about other ways we can try to tell our story. Last, I mean, we know last budget, we had to eliminate nine positions, um, with some contractual raises that were in the budget. You know, we were, the levy, the, the limitations allowed us to go up, say, $350,000, and we already had contractual raises that were over $400,000, so we were essentially starting with a negative $50,000. And I know it's so, it's so hard, I think for anybody here to discuss it in depth, but I'm trying to get to tell the story to residents and businesses that are inquiring about why property taxes go up. And we hear complaints about all the things we would love to be able to address more aggressively than we do, whether it's road and abatement, whether it's reckless driving, whether it's crime trends, whether it's car thefts, whether it's catalytic converter thefts, all the things we're getting the complaints about, we're struggling to find the resources to tackle with these, tackle these issues. And I, I don't know how we can tell the state, how this is, you know, what other way we can try to tell the story to people that make these decisions. The league's been all over it, though.
Madam Chair, the Library Board and Police and Fire Commission and the Board of Health will also be considering a similar resolution, and then I believe we're gonna try to do some public information campaign.
Similar to what Dark Store was a couple of years ago.
Well, thank you all for your input, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Um, as a discussion.
Uh, Madam Chair, question, question for the mayor.
All the engineering.
What are the lawmakers who are, who are blocking this? What are, what are their responses when, when the league and when folks are speaking about this? And how are the lawmakers in, in West Alice?
Well, to be blunt and honest, you know, there's, there's one, for a 50-50 state in every presidential election, we have, what is it, 66 Republican members of the state assembly and 33 Democrats, give or take? So the, one party is, is got a very, very strong majority in the assembly. The Senate's a little bit closer, but there's still a majority with the Republicans. I've had state representatives tell me they're gonna try things, but they say they can't get it through caucus, which would mean Robin Voss, Speaker Voss, is blocking things that are attempted to be done. Every time you get closer to an election, and because the assembly seats are two-year seats, you got about a year to get something done, and then nobody wants to let the other side look good because they have elections in a year, which is unfortunate. You know, I've currently got, I'm getting phone calls from a former state assembly person who's now running for the seat vacated by Dale Cuyenga, who sadly was one of the people that seemed genuinely interested in trying to make changes, but he's not running again. I don't, I don't know if it's they don't understand it, or if they just want to be able to tell everybody that they're not raising taxes. And if, if you don't want to raise taxes, we won't raise taxes, but like I said earlier, it's challenging our ability to tackle the problems that we face as elected officials. We're, we're powerless on these things, we just are struggling so bad. So, you know, I, we've talked, we've met with state senators, state reps, you know, we've, pre-COVID, we've done, where we've had both state senators and all three state representatives come in and meet with us, and we give them ideas, and then they go to Madison, and I don't think they remembered a word we said to them the Tuesday night before. So they're in safe seats, they have the appropriate letter next to their name, they don't need to do anything, until the people that vote and that are here and that are listening to this, contact them, but it's also hard to contact your state assembly, puberty's great. Your state assembly person, when you have trouble explaining what you want to argue. I mean, you can, you can do it in simple terms, but it's very complex, and it's very detailed, but we're not on a sustainable course, that's the bottom line. So I, I really don't know where the breakdown is. I mean, if, I've heard, I've heard state reps say, well, they're up for reelection, and they don't want, you know, nobody wants the other side to look good for the year prior to assembly seats coming up for election. Which is frustrating.
It's ignorant.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, all the person rank.
Oh, the Manvai Kelly.
Mayor, see the, uh, the fact it is that, uh, sometime, you know, I, I get a little perturbed, uh, the questions that I hear coming from, uh, Madison or so many people. You know, they use the terminology as conservative, as conservative. So conservative, I never got an answer from nobody, what really means conservative, really? What really means, you know? That's my strong opinion, because conservative or liberal, they still spend money, and conservatives spend just as much money. In this state, I know I probably be out of the, uh, question right now, but over a million dollars goes to someone that really, to me, that's false, a- a- and we use a million dollars from the taxpayer dollars, and then we are conservative. Then we are conservative. To me, that's a phony, phony information to the taxpayers of Wisconsin, really. A- a- and the bottom line is that, uh, you know, what you say, Mayor, that's the truth, you know, uh, there's money that, uh, in, in the state, you know, but the fact that is, we have people out there that they just, uh, they, they like to show you that, uh, they don't raise taxes, but they do raise taxes in a different way.
If I, if I could, Madam, Madam Chair, just one, one final point, and I don't have this number in front of me, but, um, if, if, I'll send this to you, but if you could find out the amount that state spending has gone up in the years that everybody in Madison is telling us, our spending is not going up, it would knock you to the floor. It was, it was like, I want to say, over 100%.
I tell the truth, that's the truth.
Their spending was soaring, while they're telling every city, village, and town in the, in the state that they can't spend money. That's all I got.
Something has to change.
Yes.
Yes, well, hopefully, they'll take notice of our resolution. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, carry. Number 30, appointment of Mayor Devine by Shirley Locks to Commissioner Nye Agie.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, carry.
Motion adjourned.
Adjourned.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Maybe someday I, maybe someday I serve on those committees, you know?
All right.